Appeals meeting for Wednesday, June 25th, 2025 to all persons interested in or affected by the actions only where appeals are hereby notified. You're hereby notified pursuant to section 11, chapter 48, the general laws of Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all amendments thereto that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held today, Wednesday, January 2025, uh, January 25th, 2025. The zoning board of appeals public hearing will be held by remote participation methods. Public access is meeting shall be provided in the following manner. The meeting will be televised live via Xfinity Channel 18 or high definition channel 1072. May also be accessed via the government access channel livestream on the town of Barnstable's website. HTTP colon slash slash streaming eighty-five dot town of Barnstable dot U S slash cable cast public site. Slash watch slash the number one question mark, channel equal sign, number one. Real time access is only more of appeals meeting is available by utilizing the zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided. Public comment can be addressed as only more appeals by utilizing the zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID. The zoom link is HTTPS colon slash slash town of Barnstable dash U S dot zoom dot U S slash J slash eight four six six two five seven zero four six seven. Or calling eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine and entering the meeting ID eight four six six two five seven zero four six seven. Applicants representative individuals required are entitled to appear before the zoning board of appeals may appear remotely. And may participate through accessing the link or telephone number. Provided above documentary exhibits and or visual presentation should be submitted in advance of the meeting to Anna dot Brigham at town dot Barnstable dot M A dot U S. So that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing copies. The applications are available for review by calling Anna at five oh eight. Eight six two four six eight two or emailing Anna dot Brigham at town dot Barnstable dot M A dot U S. We will start off with introduction of board members. Herbug see.
I am present.
Paul Pinnard.
Present.
Mark Hanson.
I'm present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
Larry Hurwitz.
Present.
Manny House.
Present.
Rodney Tavano. Is absent Natalie Pittinger is absent and I am Jacob Dewey. First notice the recording, the meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being recorded and broadcast on the town of Barnstable's government access channel and according to MGL, chapter 38, section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting and if so, please make their presence known. Seeing none. Um, first order we had minutes from March 26th, 2025, April 9th, 2025 and April 23rd, 2025. Does anyone have any comments or want to approve them in bulk?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, uh, March 26th, April 9th and April 23rd, 2025.
And I need a second. All right, roll call vote, her bosom seat.
In favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
Favor.
Sorry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Manny House.
In favor for March 26th, I was not present at the April meetings.
Okay, and I'm also in favor, so the minutes are approved. All right, first item, we have old business. Appeal number 2024 dash zero three nine twenty-five Falmouth Road LLC has filed an appeal of an administrative official decision in accordance with MGL, chapter 48, section seven. Eight and 15 in section two forty dash eighty-eight of the town of Barnstable zoning ordinance. The appellant is appealing the decision of the building commissioner and issuing building permit BLDC twenty-two dash two two seven dated September 17th, 2024. The part was initially denied pending the narrative, the receipt of a narrative to explain the expansion of mechanical bays on the property. The appellant's position is that the permit falls fails to take into account evidence and documentation from the town records and files which conflict with the determination. To issue the building permit, the subject property is located at ninety-five Falmouth Road. Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on assessors map three eleven as parcel zero seven three. Um, it's located in the highway business HB and residence B RB zoning district. This has been continued since November 13th, 2024, January 8th, 2025, February 12th, 2025 and April 9th, 2025 and no members. Were assigned, we received. I, I don't really think that's a request for a continuance, but there is six letters in a document. I mean, six words in a document that was submitted. I don't know if we want to accept that as a continuance or not. I will defer.
I think for a continuance, uh, after the first one, he has to appear, somebody has to appear in person, right, Anna?
Well, the reason for the continuance is that we are waiting word from our legal department regarding standing. So it's really our issue, it's, it's within the town. That, um, we haven't heard from the legal department yet. So I told attorney Ford that it was our, our issue and that, um, I didn't see a reason for him to appear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So just for the record, the, the correspondence we received, I don't know who it's from. I don't know where it came from, but it's dated six eighteen twenty twenty-five. It says Anna, July 23rd works for John and me. Let me know if you need another extension, Mike. I assume that's attorney Ford, Mike Ford?
Correct.
Okay, there's no address, there is no signature, nothing, just for the record. Um, so does someone want to make a motion to accept we're going to July 23rd or?
You make a motion to accept the continuance to July 23rd, 2025.
Fucking cool.
All right, roll call vote, her bosom seat.
Favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Manny House.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. All right, so again, now we have appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four zero twenty-five Falmouth Road LLC has filed. An appeal of an administrative officials decision in accordance with MGL, chapter 48, section seven, eight and 15 and section two forty dash eighty-eight of the Barnstable zoning ordinance. The appellant is appealing decision of the building commissioner in a letter dated September fourth, 2024. The appellant believes that the determination fails to take into account. Evidence and documentation from town records and files which conflict with the determination and do not. Address the concerns raised as set forth in the appellant's enforcement letters and correspondence. Subject properties located ninety-five Falmouth Road and one twenty-three Falmouth Road. Hyannis, Massachusetts, shown on assessors map three eleven parcel zero seven three and zero seven eight lots are located in the highway business HB and residence B RB zoning district. Again, this was continued from November 13th, 2024, January 8th, 2025, February 12th, 2025, April 9th, 2025. No members were assigned and we have the same, um. Same correspondence in the folder, um, for the, for this item. Asking for it to go to July 23rd.
Make a motion to approve the continuance to July 23rd, 2025.
Second pool.
All right, roll call vote, her bosom seat.
Favor.
Paul Pinnard.
Favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Manny House.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. Um, so that is.
Hey.
Um. All right, moving on, appeal number twenty twenty-five dash zero one four Oscar Milan Milan. As ten has applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash twenty-five C one. Conditional uses in the VBA business district and two forty dash one twenty-five C special permit provision. The applicant seeks to open an ice cream shop also selling prepackaged baked goods. The prior tenant was a caviar retail shop. There are a hundred and three parking spaces and seven are required. The subject property is located at three eight two one Falmouth Road, building three suite A in Marson's Mills, Massachusetts, as shown on assessors map zero five seven as parcel zero zero four. It's located in the village business A VBA zoning district. This was continued from June 11th, 2025 because we did have that issue with the, uh, elevator for access. Sitting on this would be our regular members. Her bosom seat, Paul Pinnard, Mark Hanson, Aaron Webb. And myself, three, four, five. Yeah, what would be the five of us as regular members? Uh, I believe the applicant is here.
Yes, I, uh, Mr. Chairman, good evening, uh, attorney Robert Mills from Princey Mills, Lauren Hyannis. And here with me is Oscar Milan, the applicant. Uh, as you've indicated, uh, in your public announcement, uh, Mr. Milan seeks a special permit under two forty twenty-four. Uh, C one to open an ice cream shop also selling, uh, prepackaged baked goods. The property is located in Windmill Square, which is thirty-eight twenty-one, uh, Falmouth Road, building three, unit A three. Uh, again, as you've indicated, uh, the use that we're proposing, uh, is a, uh, a use that's allowed as a conditional use in this zoning district. Provided we obtain a special permit first, uh, we've, we've, uh. Made most of the stops, if not all the stops along the way to get to this point, we've been to preliminary site plan review. And final site plan review, which was conditioned upon our amongst other things, getting a special permit. There will be two to three employees, uh, engaged at the site, uh, no seating, um, all take out, uh, selling, uh, a marginized ice cream. Uh, frozen drinks and, and prepackaged baked goods. No cooking will take place on the premises. The operation is just described requires seven parking spaces under your, under your zoning ordinance. There's a hundred and three on site. As again, site plan, final site plan was approved on June 5th. Uh, we got a variance from the board of health for something that you're probably not necessarily concerned about, but it relates to the, to the lack of a grease trap in the ground. Uh, so he has to have a grease trap interceptor, uh, under the sink, which, which we got a variance for that. He does have a common vituums, uh, food permit. Uh, and as such, we believe that this proposal, uh, fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. And will not cause any substantial detriment, uh, uh, to the public court or to the surrounding neighborhood.
Great. Thank you, attorney Princey. Uh, does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Just very quick. Attorney Mills, is, is that one of three spaces? Is that general parking or are there a certain number of dedicated, dedicated spaces to the other businesses in that plaza?
There, to my knowledge, there's no dedicated spaces to any particular business.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, uh, real quick, what, which unit is it? So is it, is it the old Duncan space?
No, well, let me just think that. No, it's the old caviar shop. When I say old, it's, I don't know how long the caviar shop was there, but at least it was there for a couple of years. It's adjacent to a, um, convenience store.
Okay, so it is on the front side facing twenty-eight.
Yeah, the twenty-eight side. Yeah.
Yeah. And who in the surrounding areas is doing that? I mean, there's, um.
It's Chad's down the street, or used to be called Chad's.
Yeah, it's over by, um.
Where the limousines are.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah.
And I'm trying to think of the next closest one. The next closest one is probably the Polar Cave.
Yeah.
After that, going in that toward Mashpee.
Yep.
Uh, but that's, that's all I can think of at the moment. I guess four Cs would be maybe the next one after that.
Sure. Well, it seems like you guys have done, um, as much homework as you possibly can thus far. So, and with all those approvals. I'm good.
Thank you. Thanks. It's been, it's been a struggle to get to this point. We appreciate it.
I have a part of it all the more enjoyable.
Anyone on, do anyone have any questions before we open for public comment?
Nope.
All right, I will, um, open the hearing for public comment. Do we have any members in the public want to speak to this? Just, uh, introduce yourself and your address. For the record. Do we have anyone here that wants to speak to this? There are two pages. No, I don't believe we received any items of public comment on this.
We did not.
All right, I'll make a motion to close public comment.
I couldn't.
Mark. All right, roll call voting closing public comment, her bosom seat.
In favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So public comments closed back to the board. For any deliberation or we can close the public hearing and make findings.
I'm happy to do that. I don't have any questions.
All right, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. No more, um. Evidence can be taken after that.
Come on.
Any a second?
Yeah, second call.
Roll call vote, her bosom seat.
Favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So now if someone wants to make findings, we can, uh. Make findings, you offered, or Paul?
Paul, I'll, I'll do it. Okay.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, this has to do with appeal number twenty twenty-five dash oh one four Milan slash the Grove Street Realty Trust. I find that the application falls within the category specifically accepted in the ordinance. For a grant of a special permit. After an evaluation of the evidence presented, I find the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinances. And would be. And would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. I want to note that there's more than adequate parking places. The site plan review has been approved and this is currently a, a shopping center area with, um, with the light stores around it. And number three, a site plan has been reviewed and found approvable with conditions. It was, uh, issued, uh, site planner view. Issued an approval letter of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Those are my findings.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote on, uh, Paul's findings to approve, her bosom seat.
Favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. Uh, Paul, do you have conditions on that?
I do. I have conditions. One through four is outlined in the, um, staff report with some date. Anna, what's the date on that?
It's dated May 29th, 2025.
Okay.
Attorney Mills, is that all agreeable?
It's all agreeable.
All right. Uh, so we'll do a roll call vote on approving the conditions, her bosom seat.
In favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So, um, you have your special permit. Good luck. I hope you guys can get a, get going this season.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you all.
Sorry for the inconvenience two weeks ago with the, uh, elevator. There's nothing we could do about it.
We appreciate it, all your, all your efforts. Thanks so much.
All right, moving along to new business, we have appeal number twenty twenty-five dash zero one five. Bruce W. Kelly and Lisa Mycock Kelly have applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash ninety-one H three. Develop lot protection, demolition, rebuilding on non-conforming lots. The applicants are seeking a special permit to allow the demolition of the existing dwelling and construction of a dwelling. On a non-conforming lot, the prior lot was subdivided and as such, a special permit is required. Where the construction would otherwise be allowed as a right, the subject property is located at thirty-four Lake Street, Katuat, Massachusetts, as shown on assessors map. Zero two four as parcel zero one eight dash zero zero one. It's located in the residence F R F zoning district. Um, I, I think we should go through this if we, and if, I don't think we need the variance, but, um. We can do the variance concurrently.
Yeah, may I, may I say that? I don't think we need the variance either. I consulted with staff and I filed it as a belt and suspenders. Uh, reason and I'll explain that once I have a chance, but if we could do a dual hearing, that would be great.
So you want me to open that one?
Um, well, let, let me get into a, let me get, let me get the pulse to board. They, there's an existing variance and there's a, I went, look, and do. No, three.
Breaking up.
The dimensional variance, I'll just read the last paragraph, uh, I mean, the last sentence. Any expansion to the existing structures would require modification of this variance and discussing with it, um, and the team, we talked about the fact that this board might consider. A tear down and then a rebuild of a new structure that's larger to be, um, and it, you know, uh, an expansion of the existing structure where I actually think it's a, it's not because it's in a total different new, new place. It's a brand new structure and it's not an expansion of that existing structure. So if, if the board were to agree with that, then. I, I, then the variance. Will not be necessary. Again, I, it was filed as a belt and suspenders type of approach. I don't know if I can get feedback on that, if that's appropriate, but that's the, that's the, the thinking and, and I. And I, I don't believe it's necessary. I think the special permit should cover this, but, um, I didn't want to all of a sudden have the board say, you know what, I think you need a variance and then. Wait an extra eight weeks and, and, you know, the clients thought that that was the, the prudent approach, you know, with consultation from myself and the team.
And now that's on the cottage or that's on, there's a variance from nineteen sixty-five, right?
It's, uh, what's the date of it? Um.
There, well, there was one in two thousand.
Yeah, the one in two thousand, the one that I'm talking about.
Okay.
And that's on the cottage down below. And if you look at, uh, I'll read the entire paragraph, uh, the dimensional variance is issued to the existing structures only and any new additions, including additional stories. Shall be required to meet the requirements of zoning, which include a thirty foot front setback. And a fifteen foot side setback and a fifteen foot rear setback. Any expansions to the existing structures, that's why I think it applies. Um, uh, would require modification of this variance. So in reality, it's, this is a tear down. And not a, you know, and not a, um. Uh, an addition to that's one of the existing structures. It's a new structure. But in case this board was to have kind of a conservative interpretation of it. We felt it was important to file for the variance. Oh, it's actually not a variance. It's a modification of a variance, which is a much lower standard.
What, what happened in the nineteen sixty-five variance? I don't, we didn't receive a copy of it.
Um. No, I, I didn't have one on, um. I, I, I don't know. This was the variance I was aware of. I wasn't aware of the sixty-five variance. I'm sorry. When I did the records check with the town, I was only became aware of this. I didn't run a full title.
Okay, I mean, I, I, I think we better just, I think we better go through the special permit first and then if we need to, we'll do the variance. But I think, I mean, I guess if we granted you the special permit potentially would. Wouldn't need the variance to be modified because you're not acting on that, correct?
Yes, because we're tearing down and rebuilding. Yeah, exactly. And that's my analysis. But again, when I, when, when I, I, I spent a lot of time on this and a lot of time in consulting and on the conservative approach was to. To put the variance as a backup, but I, I hope we don't have to get there.
Okay, well, let's proceed with the special permit. Um, let's assign members here. So it would be again, our regular members, if everyone's comfortable sitting this, her, Paul, Mark, Aaron and myself. Is that okay, everyone to sit on this?
True.
All right. So attorney Lawler, whenever you're ready to give us your.
So, um, in this, uh, particular, uh, Anna, the, would you pull up the, uh, this, the site plan, please?
Sure. One moment, please.
So if you're looking, um, it's.
Let me zoom in.
Zoom in on it if you may.
Yep.
Uh, you can see the existing structure, um. In, uh, in the light, uh, text and I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just going to close the door here. I'm sorry, hold on. Sorry about that. Um. The, if you look at the up here, um, uh, to be demolished, the existing structure, uh, and. What is, you know, obviously being proposed is the proposed dwelling. The dwelling itself is an increase from five forty-two to nine twenty-five, uh. A little less than four hundred square feet. However, the larger portion, obviously the deck, uh, which is another, um, five hundred and forty-five square feet. You know, makes the dimensional requirement a much bigger, but the actual dwelling itself, um, is a, in, in a proposed addition of about four hundred square feet from the existing. Um, the, uh, engineers, uh, on vacation, uh, today, but, um, with the application, all the sideline setbacks are met. All the, all the other requirements of the statute are met and what we're seeking, because the lot was, uh, rezoned, uh, I mean, it was transferred. Uh, is under bylaw two forty ninety-one HC. And under that, uh, provision, it allows for, um. The, uh, uh, demolition and rebuild, provided we meet, meet all the criteria, which we do. Uh, as provided in the two, uh, the three sections prior, prior to that, um. Uh, H one, uh, B one, two and three, those three sections, I can go through them, but I, I believe you're familiar with those. The, with respect to the area, um, if. You could, uh, on a, pull up the, uh, that little hand drawn map I did, that piece of work, the piece of artwork I did.
Um.
It's called, I think, um. No, it's the, it's a, I think I, when I sent, I sent it to you today, it was the called, um. A butter's, um.
Oh. Map of supporting a bu- uh, neighbors?
Map of sporting abouters, thank you. And if, if you can, I guess zoom out now. Um. Excuse the handwriting, but, uh, you can see, uh, thirty-four, it's the one in bold from the town website. Uh, I'm not going to read every letter. You have them all. There's about, um, you know, close to ten letters in, in the file. But I wanted to point out is that every butter to the property, uh, the three of butters are across the street. And virtually the entire neighborhood has written letters or emails or text messages in support of this. Um, I don't believe there are any, you know, any opposition to it, uh, which would be, um, consistent with the fact that it's in keeping, uh, you know, with the, uh. The integrity of the neighborhood in keeping with, uh, the other structures, uh, if, uh, if, uh, Tim left. Tim, can you share your screen or no?
I, actually I can't, I'm, I've got two.
Okay, then no problem. Anna, can you pull up the, um, I just, you know, just the elevations? I just want to point out what we have here.
Are they part of the application itself?
Yeah, they're in the first, uh, they're in the first, um, file there. If you click on it, it go down to image number five and six.
Okay.
There you go.
Sorry about that.
My screen's doing the same thing on.
Is it?
Yes.
Like.
I apologize.
To load.
Let's.
Here we go.
There goes.
All right.
You know, as you can see, it's a very traditional Kate Cott style home beautifully architect. Again, it does not deviate from the intent of the zoning ordinance. It's, you know, it, there's no detriment to the neighborhoods or it's, you know, it is certainly not a substantial detriment to the public good. Which I think is evidenced by the neighbors involved. I'm not going to go on and on on this, um. Uh, you know, I think that if you look at the property, uh, the, the, the home now sits in the middle of the lot, fully conforming where it wasn't before. Uh, it's not, you know, some giant home, uh, the, the actual living space itself is still under a thousand square feet. If you take out the deck. Uh, it's very appropriate for the lot. It's very appropriate for the area. Um, it conforms with all the special permit requirements, uh, and we would, uh, request that, uh, it be approved.
All right, thank you, attorney Lawler. Are there any questions for the applicant?
I just have one, um, attorney Lawler, I'm just noticing on the site plan and I'm assuming this is, uh. The side yard setbacks in Katuat, are they fifteen feet? I, I noticed that it, it gives indication twenty-one feet to the side of the building. But as it doesn't take into account the staircase, I'm assuming that falls inside of the.
Yeah, I, um, John O'Day is not here, but he assured me we were in full compliance with all.
Okay.
The, um, of the sideline setbacks.
Okay, thank you.
Any other applicants have any questions? I mean, any other board members? So I guess we just have to make sure that we check all the boxes on. Um, two forty ninety-one H, which I think we do. Um. So your floor area is going to be what? Thirteen?
Uh, the, the floor area is under the, because if, if you're counting the decking, it's fifteen. If you're not, it's nine hundred, I mean, the nine hundreds.
Okay, so then we're, we're meeting that twenty.
It's like half, little half.
Yeah. Well, well below that requirement.
Okay.
Either way.
Yeah, because floor ratio shall not exceed point three or the existing ratio of the structure being demolished and rebuilt. Want to make sure we covered that, which I think we did.
Hmm.
And then all buildings won't exceed twenty percent, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Well into that.
All right, so unless anyone else has questions, we can, um, open for public comment. We did receive, those letters in the file here. We received a slew of letters. First one is from Charlie and Pam Thompson, um, who are at thirty-four Lake Street, um, and they are in support. And the next one is from, this is the residence at eighty-one High Street.
Bellinger, Chris Bellinger.
Lauren Bellinger, uh, also in support. Uh, next one is from DJ Long, um, at seven Lewis Pond Road in support. And we have one from Benet dot it, Dotridge at fifty-one Lake Street, um, in favor of the project. Uh, we have one from Kevin Low, uh, who's at twenty-five Lewis Pond Road in Kettuitt, um, in support. And Nancy Allen, uh, twenty-three Lake Street, um, in support. Concerned about short-term rental, the nubbies for short-term rentals, uh, Ted and Tracy. Uh, that's actually from, uh, this is from Bruce Kelly. Uh, no, Ted and Tracy, Andre Dis at thirty-one Lake Street, um, also in support of the project. And the last one in the file here is, uh, it looks like a text message.
From a Jeffrey David.
From Jeff, yes, um.
At forty Lake Street.
Okay. Um, is there anyone here that wants to speak to this? Just, uh, say your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Lisa Mycock Kelly, ninety-nine High Street. My husband Bruce Kelly were the applicants in this matter. And I just also wanted to point out that we are a direct abutter to this parcel. Our primary residence is actually, um, if you're facing, um, the, the, um, proposed struc- new structure to the right. Um, and what we're merely trying to do is, um, get this, that the current structure is literally down in a hole and sits to the very back of this lot. Originally, the only access to this structure was actually from Lewis Pond Road and not Lake Street. And the, um, variance that was allowed in twenty twenty, um, allowed for them to subdivide because there was frontage on Lake Street. So we're really just trying to bring this building into the proper placement on that lot. Um, you know, now that we, we do have the, the Lake Street frontage. Um, and Mr. Luft has done a great job and, um, built a beautiful or designed a beautiful cottage. And our intentions would be to, um, rent it full-time and to be perfectly honest. Hopefully, a child at some point in the future will reside there. But I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak to this? Just, uh, unmute yourself and introduce yourself.
Sure, uh, my name is DJ Long, it's seven Lewis Pond Road, I just here to offer my strong support. I think this is, uh, a, a great idea, and, uh, hopefully this will be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak to this? I think we got everyone, unless Michael Gill or Jeff David. Um, all right, so I'll make a motion to close public comment, that's, I got everything right, Anna, there was something else that came in?
That's correct, you, you have everybody.
Okay, all right, I will take a, uh, I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, her, Bodenseek. Paul Pinnard. Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, um, so that closes public comment, brings it back to the board for deliberation, or we can close the public hearing if we are satisfied. Does anyone have any thoughts or concerns or questions, or should we close the public hearing?
I think we should close it, I, it, I think this shows that we've met H, everything in H one. I'm happy to make findings if you want.
Are we concerned about the variance, or is everyone okay with the variance? I mean, I guess, I, I guess maybe I defer almost to Attorney Lawler here, are you comfortable if we give you the, the special permit, that we just withdraw the variance, or do you need us, do you think you are gonna need us to?
I mean, I, my interpretation of the variance is that, um, it says, uh, again, the language, to be very specific, um, that, I mean, this is not an expansion to the existing structure. Um, would require modification of the variance, so I don't think we're required.
Okay, so we can proceed with granting the special permit and then withdraw the variance.
I'll withdraw the variance immediately after this.
Okay. Um, I, I'm fine with that, as I begin, I would turn, uh, defer to Attorney Lawler for any issues in the future. Um, so I, I'm fine with, I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing and move to findings.
Second.
I'll second.
Roll call vote on closing, her, Bodenseek.
In favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, so, um, we're closed, um, no more deliberation. Uh, we can make findings if, Mark, you wanted to make them?
Yeah, I can, would you prefer me to read the proposal and relief requested, or can we go straight to, uh, special permit findings?
I think we can go to findings, you just are gonna have to just go through each, uh, each of those little items on there for.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, okay, very good, um. Regarding the special permit number twenty twenty-five dash zero one five Kelly, section two forty dash ninety-one H three, develop lot protection, demolition and rebuilding on non-conforming lots. Uh, for all special permits, board is required to make general findings pursuant to two forty dash one twenty-five C. The board should review the evidence presented by the applicant's staff and members of the public, and after weighing such evidence, is encouraged to articulate if and how the evidence contributes to each of the follow, uh, each of the required findings. Uh, number one, that the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance of a grant of a special permit. Section two forty dash ninety-one H three allows for the demolition and rebuilding of this residence on a non-conforming lot. Number two, site plan review is not required for single-family residential dwellings. Number three, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Further, section twenty-four ninety-one H three requires that the board define that if the proposed demolition and rebuilding cannot satisfy the criteria established, uh, establishes H one as of right, then the board may allow the demolition and rebuilding by special permit, provided the board finds that, and if I could add to three, we have, uh, letters, um, positive letters for, um, moving this project forward and that the, uh, nature of the design is, falls within the neighborhood, um, similar, um, structures. Um, number four, that the proposed yard setbacks must be equal to or greater than the yard setbacks of the existing building. All proposed setbacks for this project will conform to the ordinance. Number five, the proposed lot coverage shall not exceed twenty percent or the existing lot coverage, whichever is greater. Proposed lot coverage for this project is eleven point three percent, which does not exceed the threshold. Number six, the floor area ratio shall not exceed point three or thirty percent, the existing floor area ratio of the structure being demolished, whichever is greater. The existing F A R is three point four percent, and the proposed F A R is thirteen point four percent, which does not exceed the threshold of point three. Number seven, the building height in feet shall not exceed thirty feet to the highest plate and shall contain no more than two and a half stories. Proposed dwelling height for the proposed, um, is eighteen feet, two inches. And that the board is also asked to find that the proposed new dwelling would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing dwelling, and, uh, as per letters received and testimony tonight, uh, we've determined that it would not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Those are my findings. Second.
All right, sorry, Herb. We've got a second. On, uh, Mark's findings for twenty twenty-five, uh, zero one five, um, roll call vote on the findings, her, Bodenseek.
In favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
I'm in favor.
And I'm also in favor, uh, Mark, did you have, uh, special conditions?
I do, um, and this references staff report dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-five. We have suggested conditions number one through six. Attorney Lawler, have you reviewed these and are they acceptable?
Standard ones, thank you, yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh, so roll call vote on the conditions, her, Bodenseek.
In favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, uh, so Attorney Law, you have your special permit, I'll read, um, um, appeal number twenty twenty-five dash zero one six, Bruce W. Kelly and Lisa Mycock Kelly have petitioned for a modification of variance number two thousand dash zero four seven. The prior variance includes a provision in condition number three requiring an amendment of that variance for any expansion or modification of the dwelling. The proposed dwelling will comply with setback requirements, the subject property is located at thirty-four Lake Street, Kettuitt, Massachusetts, map zero two zero, as parcel zero one eight dash zero zero one, it's located in the residence, F, R, Sony District, um, this, uh, applicant's here and was requesting to withdraw this without prejudice, as it seems to be unnecessary for the proposed project.
Withdrawn at, at my request.
All right, I need a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote on the withdrawal, her, Bodenseek.
In favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
Favor.
Larry Hurwitz. Any else?
In favor.
In favor, and I'm also in favor, so that is withdrawn. Moving on to our last item of the night, appeal number twenty.
Just wanna say thank you, guys, it's a beautiful night and you're volunteers, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For giving up your beautiful night.
Appeal number twenty twenty-five dash zero one seven, Kareem Ambasta and, uh, trustee of the Nadine, Nadine Ambasta Trust have applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash ninety-one F, developed lot protection, merge lots. The applicant seeks to transfer the vacant unbuildable lot at fifty-one Studley Road, presently merged with sixty-one Studley Road to Mr. and Mrs. Kareem Ambasta, owners of seven Houghton Road. With the requested relief, seven Houghton Road and fifty-one Studley Road would merge into one lot. Fifty-one Studley Road would remain an unbuildable lot, no additional building lot is proposed, and no construction redevelopment is proposed. The subject property is located at sixty-one Studley Road, Hyannis, Massachusetts, shown on assessor's map, three oh six, parcel nine, zero zero nine. It's located in the residence B, R V zoning district. Um, I'm gonna recuse myself and hand this to Herb, um, to assign members and finish this out. Herb, you got it?
Yep, I'm here and on it, so. I will assign, uh, my regular members, myself, Paul, Mark, and Aaron, and I'll also assign Manny. And do have a presentation from the applicant.
Yes, sir, uh, good evening, uh, Chairman Bodenseek, um, fellow members of the board, my name is Michael Gill. I am an attorney at the law firm of Gill Divine in Hyannis, right down the street. I represent, uh, Kareem Basta, uh, in his capacity as trustee of the Nadine Ambasta Trust. The trust is the owner of abutting properties, uh, located at sixty-one Studley Road and fifty-one Studley Road, uh, in Hyannis. I'd note that, uh, Kareem Basta is joining me in the Zoom hearing tonight, uh, and he's also available for any questions that may come up, uh, after we finish our presentation. Uh, as set forth in, uh, Chairman Dewey's, uh, introduction, we're here, uh, before you this evening seeking a special permit. Uh, the relief sought tonight is simply to unmerge fifty-one Studley Road from sixty-one Studley Road. I'd also note that typically, when one appears before this board seeking to unmerge lots, the purpose is so that the applicant can redevelop or build a home or another structure on the unmerged lot. I'd like to first emphasize to the board that this is not what is happening here. In fact, it's quite the opposite, there is no redevelopment proposed, there is no intent to make the unmerged lot a buildable lot. In fact, it will remain an unbuildable lot, and as I will demonstrate, nothing is going to change on the ground, nothing is going to change in the neighborhood. Okay, having said that, uh, allow me to briefly, uh, describe the properties that are affected by this application. Um, and, uh, a picture is truly worth a thousand words, so I'm hoping that, uh, Anna would be so kind as to share her screen to show the aerial, uh, photo from the assessor's website. Uh, this was included in the application materials, and I think it provides probably, um, a very good visual evidence of kind of what's going on, on the ground. And while, while she's bringing that up, I'll note that there are actually three parcels that are affected by this special permit application. The properties are sixty-one Studley Road, which is directly left of the high, left or west of the highlighted area. There's fifty-one Studley Road, which is highlighted, and seven Houghton Road, which is directly south, abutting to the south. Uh, all of these properties have been owned by the, uh, Basta family for over thirty years. All three lots are in the R V zoning district, and all three lots are non-conforming parcels under the current R V regulations. Uh, first, with respect to sixty-one Studley Road, that, you'll see that to the left of the highlighted, uh, area. Uh, this, uh, parcel was purchased in nineteen seventy-six by, uh, the applicant's parents, Nadine and Nabeel. At the time, it was purchased as a vacant lot, um, and, and Mr. and Mrs. Basta built a three-bedroom home on the property in nineteen seventy-seven. Ultimately, ownership of sixty-one Studley Road was transferred from them to the Nadine Basta Trust. Mr. and Mrs. Basta enjoyed many, many years, many summers of the property from nineteen seventy-seven until recently. Uh, Mr. Basta passed away, um, in two thousand twenty-two, while, uh, Ms. Nadine Basta just passed away in November. Uh, moving to fifty-one Studley Road, this parcel, you see, is located on the corner of Studley and Houghton, it has frontage on both. As you can see, it's a vacant lot, uh, improved only by a basketball court, okay? Uh, there's also a small shed in the lower left-hand corner. Uh, it's important to note that this lot was originally not part of the Studley Road subdivision. All the houses you see on Studley Road, this house was, this lot was not a part of that. In nineteen seventy-four, there was an A and R plan, uh, that was approved on Houghton Road, and the Caggianno family, at that time, they owned number five, what's now known as number five Houghton, number seven Houghton, and fifty-one Studley Road. Uh, the A and R plan created these three lots. Number five Houghton had a single-family lot that was eventually deeded to one of the Caggianno kids. Number seven Houghton, same analysis, and number fifty-one Studley was a vacant lot, and it was kind of an orphan lot, because there was nothing they could do with it. On the nineteen seventy-four plan that created that lot, there's a notation, and I quote, it says, "This parcel does not constitute a building lot in and by itself," unquote. So having no use for that orphan lot, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Caggianno sold the lot to Mr. and Mrs. Basta in nineteen ninety-one. So in nineteen ninety-one, because of the common ownership, fifty-one Studley merged with sixty-one Studley. The two properties are, remain individually assessed, but from a zoning perspective, they've been merged since nineteen ninety-one. Uh, both remain in the, uh, Nadine Basta Trust today. And the third parcel that's affected by this application is seven Houghton Road. This abuts fifty-one Studley to the south. Um, technically, seven Houghton Road is not part of the application that's before you, because the relief that we seek is simply to disassociate or unmerge the fifty-one Studley lot from the sixty-one Studley lot. Uh, but it would be disingenuous not to discuss seven Houghton in the context of this application. Seven Houghton has a four-bedroom, single-family home on it. That home is owned by the applicant Kareem Basta and his wife. They have owned that property since nineteen ninety-five, for the last thirty years. And since that time, Kareem, his wife, and his family have been using the vacant lot as accessory to seven Houghton. A basketball court was built there, and, and they've been enjoying that for over twenty years by Kareem's family. Uh, they also use that, you know, you see the frontage is really on seven Houghton Road, and they use that basketball court also for excess parking for family and for guests. So even though, you know, technically fifty-one Studley merged with sixty-one Studley in nineteen ninety-one, for the last thirty years, it's essentially been, from a practical perspective, it's essentially been part of the seven Houghton Road property. Now, having discussed the three properties, we'll move on to the requested relief. What we're seeing, again, what we're seeking to do via this special permit is simply to unmerge fifty one Studley from sixty one Studley. According to section two forty dash ninety one F, a special permit is required when adjoining lots held in common ownership are proposed to be transferred, which would de-increase the degree of nonconformity. Although the proposed transfer of fifty one Studley to Seven Houghton would decrease the nonconforming nature of Seven Houghton, it would increase the nonconforming nature of sixty one Studley, thereby necessitating the need for a special permit and why we're before you tonight. We respectfully would submit to you that the applicant's proposal satisfies the requirements for the issuance of a special permit. These are, number one, the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for the grant of a special permit pursuant to both section two forty dash ninety one F and one twenty-five C. The board is in fact authorized to issue a special permit under these circumstances. In fact, the board just did so in October on a very similar application. Number two, after an evaluation of the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and the intent of the zoning ordinance. It would not represent a substantial detriment to the publichood or to the neighborhood affected. And number three, the single-family nature of the property and of the accessory structure, accessory nature of the detached structure are preserved. I'd submit to you that the application satisfies all of these requirements. After issuance of a special permit, the sixty one Studley parcel standing alone would remain perfectly consistent and in character with all the remaining homes on Studley Road in terms of lot size, lot configuration and lot coverage. There would be no change to the current use. There'd be no change to the character of the neighborhood. In fact, I think many of the neighbors think that fifty one Studley already has merged with seven accessory because it's been used that way for so long. And if you look at the aerial that we just showed you, you'll see that the sixty one Studley lot is similar in configuration to almost all of the other homes on sixty one Studley Road, on Studley Road, excuse me. Again, there's no new building lot or any redevelopment proposed or even contemplated. If the board were to issue the special permit and grant us the reliefs we seek, the family intends to immediately deed fifty one Studley Road to, from the Nadine Basta Trust to Kareem Basta and his wife. This, of course, being in common ownership and nonconforming lots, this would immediately merge seven Houghton with fifty one Studley. This fifty one Studley lot would remain unbuildable. And once merged, that, this would actually return seven Houghton not only to its original configuration forty, fifty years ago, but also consistent with its current use and its use over the last thirty years as accessory to seven Houghton. And you may ask, why are we doing this? Well, we're doing this because with Mr. And Mrs. Basta having passed, there's no one using sixty one Studley Road. The family intends to sell sixty one Studley Road. But because sixty one and fifty one have merged, the applicant is unable to sell sixty one Studley on its own without the special permit. If they did so, this would implicate the doctrine of infectious invalidity, a doctrine near and dear to our building commissioner Florence's heart and to Mr. Kupfer's heart. So we're trying to do things the right way and get ahead of it and, and, and get the special permit and then be able to deed the property, deed the fifty one Studley Road property to seven Houghton and sell sixty one Studley. And finally, before taking questions from the board, I'd also add one more thing that speaks directly to the requirement as to whether the board is issued to authorize a special permit under these circumstances. Last October, there was a special permit application before this board, very similar facts. And, and the board granted the precise relief sought in this application. Some of you may remember the application. This was the application of Manheim Realty. It was presented by attorney Michael Schultz. It has involved two Hyannis Port properties where the applicant was seeking to unmerge one lot and add it to another abutting property. After a brief hearing and no public comment either for or against the application, the board voted unanimously to issue that permit and allow the transfer. On that hearing, the voting members were Chair Bodenseek, Mr. Webb, Mr. Alves, Mr. Hurwitz and Mr. Hanson, all of whom I think are with us tonight. So there's real, we have, we have recent precedent that supports the issuance, issuance of the special permit in this particular situation. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you. And you pronounced my name right the first time, not the second time. That's excusable. Over two syllables and people get a little, so, does anyone have any questions? Questions for the applicant?
Hello, Danny.
I do. And I think you said this, and I read it, but just to confirm. So fifty one and sixty one are under common ownership and merged, and it's fifty one that you want unmerged. And in so doing, it'll make sixty one more nonconforming, and that's what gets us into the provision we're talking about. All right?
Oh, correct. Yes.
Okay. And is the, so you mentioned a, a, a plan to convey sixty one externalist sixty one Studley Road. Are there any plans to, I know it can't be an individual separate lot. Any plans to build anything in what is currently fifty one?
Yeah, there, there are no plans. It will, there are no plans whatsoever to build anything on fifty one. It'll be, it'll immediately merge with seven Houghton. So from a zoning perspective, those two lots will be treated as one.
Correct.
Right? And in that parcel, the parcel fifty one Studley, it's, it's just, it's fifty eight hundred square feet. It's a very small parcel, point one three acres. So it's very, very small. There's not much you can do with that. You know, I could see maybe somewhere down the line, you know, they, the, the side setback of number seven Houghton is very close to the line. You know, maybe they push out the driveway or something like that, but that, that, I'm just, I'm speculating. There's no plan to do anything with it.
Thank you.
I just have a question real quick. Can we condition, and this is more to the board, but can we condition the approval with seven Houghton now being fully built out? And anything in addition would obviously have to come back to us. I mean, it's just, just a, just a, again, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't think, and I trust that Attorney Gill and the, the applicant are, you know, solely doing this for the purpose of trying to sell off sixty one, and that makes sixty one Studley, and it makes perfect sense to me that that's what, what's before us. But again, if we, could we just say, you know, as of today, if lots fifty one Studley and seven Houghton are merged, it is considered to be, you know, fully built out, and anything in addition would have to come before us? Just as a protection.
Well, I, that's a good point, Aaron. I, I have a question. If we agree to unmerge fifty one and sixty one, does that automatically make it, make fifty one merged with seven? Or does it have to be a hearing on that or a deed filed or something?
Yeah. May, may I answer that one?
Please.
Yeah, so I, I, I think, well, I'll answer Mr. Webb's comment as well. You know, in the, in, when this was before you in October, the condition that was added was not that it's fully built out, but that any future reconfiguration must be approved by the ZBA. So in that, that condition would be fine. In answer to Mr. Pinnard's question, you know, what you may want to do, you don't have to, but you, 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 when, once you issue the special permit, we are gonna, we're planning on deeding the property fifty one Studley immediately to Kareem and his wife so that they merge as a matter of law. There's nothing else you have to put in the thing. Yeah.
So maybe I could offer this as well, and we've done this recently on a property, is that maybe just as part of the conditioning, I think what's going to, and it may make it cleaner for you, Attorney Gill, is to do an eighty-one X plan where you register a, a full merge plan. Just have Dan Ojla, just have him present a, a merged plan so that seven is, so that fifty one basically goes away. You can record it as one deed, one lot, and then there's no question that this is in fact one lot. It, it, it almost takes that, having to deed it. I mean, you still have to deed it over, but I think putting a single plan on, on record is probably going to help in the future, and it'll help them for anything they need to do. Doesn't necessarily, you know, if they do want to build on it, it's actually going to make it easier. They still would have to come back to us, but I think it would, I think that would be something that would, you know, help with, you know, they've already got it drawn, so they would just submit an eighty-one X.
I, I, I have no objection to that. I think it's a, a good idea. I'd also say that, you know, all three of these parcels have been individually assessed forever. So, you know, what I would recommend to my client was that he, we call the assessor's office after the deed is transferred, right? And say, hey, just assess fifty one Studley and seven Houghton, assess them as one parcel, one property.
Yeah, well, if you register the deed as one parcel, if you have, if you have a full perimeter plan done for that, and again, I only know this because we did it for property literally two weeks ago, it, then it, it just gets assessed as one. You don't even have to really request it. You know, you put that on file, register the deed that way with the one plan, and then it kind of takes care of everything all at once.
Yeah, I understand. I think that's a good idea.
Well, I like your, I like your suggestion.
What's that, Paul?
I like your suggestion.
So as far as adding a condition, would we be adding, merging the two lots in the view of the assessor's office? Or that fifty one be deeded to Kareem, which then would trigger that and whatever they want to do? And they become merged and whatever they want to do as far as making it one lot in the view of the assessor's office, then that's up to that. But I think just making it a condition that they deed the land over to Kareem is a simpler condition.
No, I, I, I don't think we should get involved with, with seven Houghton or what happens. The request before us is just to unmerge the two lots. So that's why I go to, whatever happens after that is beyond us at this point. In my opinion. So if, Aaron, if you could, if you could state again what your suggestion was?
Well, it has to do with seven Houghton, so that would be non, it wouldn't pertain any longer. We don't want to address seven Houghton at this point. Because again, you're right, Paul. What's before us is unmerging fifty one from sixty one, and really that's it. It doesn't, unless I'm misreading the application, but it does not talk about merging fifty one to seven Houghton. It just separates fifty one from sixty one. So and that's, again, he's, the attorney has told us what he plans to do. But again, that's really not what we're here to, to, you know, he's been forthright with what is fine and he planned to do, but so my suggestion really doesn't pertain any longer in hindsight.
And I'll, I'll give you a word that, you know, the second that special permit issues and the appeals period runs, that deed will be recorded. Okay, I know seven Houghton is outside the scope because, of this application because we're just talking about fifty one and sixty one Studley. But I thought it was important to, we thought it was important to, to disclose our plan so everyone has knowledge of why we're doing this.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that, Attorney Gill. As, as I read the information that was submitted, I thought I read that way back when, whether it was in seventy-six or so, that fifty one and seven were merged.
Yeah, fifty one. It's actually, you know, it's, it's a funny thing academically for geeks like me. It's, it's an interesting thing, but five Houghton Road, seven Houghton Road and fifty one Studley were all one property. Okay, owned by the Caggiannos. In nineteen seventy-four, they did an A and R plan, which created the three lots, two of which were, you know, had homes on them or now have homes on them. And fifty one Studley was just kind of an orphan parcel. But what's interesting about that is that at the time, at the time that the Caggiannos sold the property to Mr. And Mrs. Basta, that fifty one Studley was a nonconforming lot. So basically, the Caggiannos violated that whole doctrine of infectious invalidity that we're so concerned about, you know, staying true to now, right? So you probably could reverse that if you wanted to go back forty years, but no need.
Okay, thank you.
Because if I could just interject one more time, I, I still think you're going to be left with an addressing issue. And I think just providing a merge plan is going to be so much easier. And for anybody in the future that wants to do anything, now you're not even going to have to question what that is. I know it's, I know they're going to send it, legally they have to transfer it, but I still think we should require, it, it's so easy. They've already got it drawn. I think we should provide a perimeter plan and have that as, as what goes on record.
And, and do you have the existing site conditions plan handy that you could show us?
Well, I'm not sure I understand, Mark.
Well, the only reason I say that is because the, the unmerging is directly related to merging it with seven.
No, not, that, that's beyond us. That's not part of this, that's not part of this hearing. This hearing is to unmerge the two lots, period. Whatever, whatever they decide to do after that is not part of this hearing. So they can do what they want to do. They don't have to, you know, I mean, they could let it become, merge automatically, but I, I don't see a problem with unmerging the two lots, and I think we should rule on that.
Okay. I, 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 yeah, one second. Sorry. Thought I was going to sneeze, and I still may, but I think, Paul, and I, I agree that that's not what's before us, and yet, you know, no offense to the attorney, but he's the one who discussed the plans, and so it's hard not to take those into consideration. When I, I think what Mark is, is getting at is simply just a process that would be, you know, user-friendly for the applicant more so than really us weighing it or conditioning it per se. Maybe, maybe Mark, you want to condition. I don't know, but.
Because, because I, I had Anna pull up the existing site conditions plan, and to do the plan that Mark is contemplating, it's basically removing the line between parcel A and number seven.
That's all it is.
That's all it is, right.
Long run.
Right, and since fifty one is part of the application, I, I, I'm, I'm fine with that condition. We'll do it.
It's going to help the applicant in the long run. It will.
Yeah, well, if, if, again, if the attorney, in my opinion, is fine with it and, and the applicant as well, and, and, and then I don't know why we wouldn't, Paul, really. I mean, I know it's not necessarily what's before us, but if, if it's part of, you know, the application, which it seems to be, why wouldn't we just do that?
It's okay with me.
Yeah, it makes sense because the, the parcel A of fifty one is nonbuildable. This thing would be just sitting there, right? And its only reason for being is to be part of seven.
Correct.
Well, yeah, but when it becomes, if and when it becomes merged with seven, then it's buildable.
The entire, that, that's what I thought. Thank you for saying that, Paul, because that's what I thought I heard Aaron to say, to put a condition that says that the lot as merged is then deemed to be fully buildable. Now that.
Well, well, I, no, I, I don't know that it's fully, but it's part of seven. If it's merged, I think they can extend, I don't know. I don't want to go there. I don't think it's part of this. I just want to state to the, to the petition's object, which was to unmerge the two lots.
It merges anyway, so their ability to use it, as second it's merged, it's, they can use it.
It's one lot. Yeah, and second, we, we record that deed, it's in common ownership, and it's one lot from a zoning perspective.
So who owns fifty one once it's unmerged?
Right now, it's, it's owned by the Nadine Basta Trust, which is the same owner as sixty one Studley.
Understood, but you're asking us to unmerge it?
Yeah, you unmerge it, and, and then what I'm, I'm telling you what we're going to do once, once it's unmerged. This is just like the Manheim case. We're going to transfer it, make it a part of, of seven Houghton, transfer it to Kareem Basta.
And his wife. It's just that as a matter of law, as you know, under common ownership, two lots like these are merged, so you almost need to do the transfer to seven concurrent with the unmerging, right?
I agree.
Yeah, I, I, as soon as we have the special permit, we, we do it. I, I think we probably should let the appeals period run. I don't anticipate any appeals, but probably should let that expire and then do it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's our, that's our intention.
Because Manny's right. I mean, so you're going to unmerge it. I mean, so you're going to unmerge it from the trust of sixty-one, and then it's going to be floating out there in no man's land without ownership, basically.
Well, it's not, it's not without ownership, it's just that.
Not without ownership, but it's floating around all by itself. It's not merged to anything anymore. And I don't think we should just unmerge lots without having a future plan for the unmerged lot. That I think, in the Vegas. I think we should just require that it be merged with number seven, no matter how that's done, either by the trust, or, I mean, the deed, or or what Mark was suggesting as far as combining it into one lot with seven. But we don't have to tell them how to do that. We just tell them that those are going to be merged as a result of this special permit.
As long as they remain under common ownership, whatever our special permits say, it's merged as a matter of law. So that's why it's almost, to Mark's point, you need to do this concurrently. The unmerge and the transfer to seven, because otherwise, it immediately reverts back to common ownership and merged to sixty-one.
Right, they don't deed it over to somebody immediately after the special permit and the period. Then it would automatically be re-merged.
Yes, so as long as you put it as a condition, then it merges. It's part of the merges, separation is part of the condition of providing that perimeter plan. It helps with DPW, it helps with fire as far as addressing, and it's going to help that it can be a cleaner deed.
Mark, I don't care.
The simplest way we can word this.
Why, why do we have to get involved with seven? Why do we have to get involved other than just splitting, unmerging?
Because then it just becomes, it becomes a piece that can be for sale.
So what? That's not our problem.
It is, because the whole point of allowing and unmerge is for their use. Right now, they're in common ownership. We do not have to allow those to be unmerged. They've presented an argument that makes sense for them to go to seven. All we're saying is, then, then put a condition in, then it goes to seven. It's not by right. I have no problem with what they're doing. I think it's fine. It's just, it's a cleaner way to do it, that's all.
I don't have a problem either. I just don't want to tell them how to do it or what to do.
I think it's, I think it's necessary for what they're planning.
Yeah, I would agree with, I would agree with Mark at this point. I mean, I think they're, they're asking us for relief, and we have the ability to say, hey, we'll grant relief to you, but this is what we expect you to do.
Or you're in good conditions.
As such.
And it hasn't been the intent of the applicant, anyway.
Yep.
Right, so Mark, can you lay out what you think that, you know, second, or the additional condition would be, so that it's clear to?
Sure, I mean, we can have yours, that it's full buildout. You know, if they want to come back, they need to come back to the board for any additional buildout of the lot. I don't believe landscaping falls into that. And I think we've seen in the past where, like a change in a driveway, that doesn't necessarily do anything, but certainly if there's any instructions.
If they build a shed in now parcel A, they would have to come back?
No, you can do that by right under a certain size. So I, I mean, it could be anything, I guess, sure. But I would just say that they file an eighty-one X perimeter plan as a merged lot and file that with the deed.
And Mark, Mr. Hanson, we're fine with that condition. I'd say, again, once, once that eighty-one X plan is on record, once that deed is on record, it's one lot, it's still, it's still a non-conforming lot. So anything we do, what's in the future, still has got to come back. So I don't think you need that condition.
We put it in as a general language. And I think we're on almost everything we do. We just feel better putting it in.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Time for public comment?
Yeah, there's one letter from a Ben Baxter, a director, a butter. So are we done with our discussion for the moment? So I'm going to open public comment. Is there anyone on Zoom to speak to this?
Do we need to vote on that?
No, we vote to close it, though. But do we vote to open? I don't believe so. Vote to open public comment?
No.
Judges?
No.
But if there's no one online to speak, I have a letter from Ben Baxter, sixty-nine Studley Road. And they're completely in support, enthusiastically so. And they have a letter dated six twenty-three twenty-five stating that. Is there anything else as far as public comment, Anna?
Let me check. Nope, that's it.
Okay, any more discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to, if, just one sec, I'm going to leave it up to the other members to decide on the, on the merging part. Again, I I don't want to direct it in the way that it's sounding. I just, I believe it would be in their best interest. It might help them clean it up. I'll leave it up to the other people.
My point is, my point, my point is, I don't know what an eighty-one F or whatever you're talking about is, so I can't vote on that.
That's fine. I, I think either way, it's merging either way. So, I mean, I think it's fine. We can leave it out. I'll let them decide. I mean, they've shown their intent. I don't want to make it any more difficult than it is. If they think there's value in it, then they can pursue it.
Well, I still think language should be in there that states that after the thirty-day appeal period, that fifty-one is going to be merged to seven. And again, it's non-conforming regardless, so we don't need to put in the fact of fully built out. We can, because that's general language we use. But he has to come, you know, the applicant would have to come before us. If he chooses to add a shed that doesn't, isn't by right, or put a garage up, or a barn, or something, that, you know, because of the non-conforming pre-existing, you know, terms of the lot. So, but I just think, again, language-wise, and I don't know that particular, you know, piece mark you're talking about either, per se.
But once it merges, once it merges, it merges. The second they transfer, it's merged, so.
Right, but to Aaron's point, though, if, if they don't do it immediately, it reverts back to merged into sixty-one, because they're under common ownership.
I don't think it merges, Mr. Alves, because you have the special permit decision that would be recorded. So once that's recorded, that basically says it's unmerged and allows it to transfer over to Seven Houghton.
So if we allow the unmerging and you never did anything to it, it would never merge back as a matter of law, because they're under common ownership?
If, yeah, once the special permit is recorded, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, but again, we're, I think it's a moot point, because we're, this is the whole reason we're doing this.
Understood.
That is true, right there. I mean, that's the sole reason. I guess we're just trying to cross all the Ts and everything. But I would move to close public comment. Do I hear a second?
I was just going to just say something to thank the board, as the previous applicant did, for their time and their public service. And, you know, I've lived in this neighborhood for almost fifty years. So, you know, we're very familiar, wouldn't do anything really to change the character, you know, our kids. Went to the grandparent's house for many, many years and hope to, you know, kind of keep it all in the family as long as we can, so I appreciate it.
Can you give us your name and address?
I'm sorry, so I'm Kareem Basta, so I'm the trustee of the Nadine Basta Trust and also the owner of Seven Houghton Road. So directly affected by what we're discussing tonight.
Very good, thank you. Now I'll move to close public comment. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, Paul?
In favor.
Mark?
Yeah, in favor.
Aaron?
In favor.
Manny?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. So public comment is closed. Do we have any further deliberation? I think we guess we're still not sure what we're going to do. But I think it just defaults. I mean, it is a moot point. It's going to be merged. Otherwise, we're talking about this for no reason. So I'm going to move to close public hearing. Do I hear a second?
Second, Mark.
Okay, all in favor, Paul?
In favor.
Mark?
I'm in favor.
Aaron?
Favor.
Manny?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. Would someone like to make findings? Okay, Manny?
I'll do it. This is on special permit application number two zero two five dash zero seven. Basta, Kareem M. Basta, trustee of the Nadine M. Basta Trust, applying for special permit pursuant to section two forty ninety-one F. Merge, develop lot protection, merge lots. The applicant, and as noted in staff, excuse me, report dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, is seeking to unmerge lots, the two lots, sixty-one and fifty-one Studley Road. I find, based on the requirements under the statute, that the applicant, application falls within the category specifically accepted in the ordinance for a grant of a special permit. This, this, these facts, or this scenario is specifically addressed by section two forty ninety-one F, which allows for a special permit. And after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. I think importantly here is that no new buildable lots being created. Ownership of what is acknowledged to be a non-buildable lot is getting transferred, or at least unmerged initially. And we have a public comment in support of this proposal. So I don't think this would represent a detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. And I guess I said three already, that the single-family nature of the property and the accessory nature of the detached structure are preserved. That is, what is now fifty-one Studley Road will continue to be a non-buildable lot. And those are my findings.
Second.
All in favor, Paul?
In favor.
Mark?
I'm in favor.
Aaron?
I'm in favor.
Manny?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. Do you have conditions, Manny?
Yeah, there are conditions number one through three in the staff report dated June twelfth. My sense of the board's view is that we should not add a condition requiring conveyance of fifty-one to seven, because that is the purpose of this. And frankly, it's not for this board. So Attorney Gill, are you okay with the conditions one through three?
Yes, yes, sir.
But I don't, those are my conditions, and I'm open to others views if I misread the sense of the board.
I think we're good. I think we're all in agreement.
Condition one basically states what we've talked about thus far, doesn't it? I mean, it talks about it merging with Seven Houghton.
Only if there's actually a conveyance. And I guess what I understood the board to say is we're not requiring that, because that's to Paul's point, that's not really before us. Although, it is the intent of the applicant.
I thought it automatically gets merged anywhere.
The ownership of Seven Houghton is different, Attorney Gill, is that correct? Is different from the ownership of sixty-one?
The ownership is different. But, but, you know, arguably, you know, it's not just ownership, it's control, so it's same control.
Okay, so. Yeah, I think if you're okay with one, which can get to Aaron's point, although there's a sentence there that says, with the requested relief, Seven Houghton and fifty-one Studley would merge.
Yeah, I'm fine with that condition. You, you folks did the similar condition on the Mannheim Realty one. And that was.
It basically states exactly what we've talked about, in my opinion. Manny, you started the sentence, with the requested relief, Seven Houghton Road and fifty-one Studley Road would merge into one lot, period. And that's what we've been talking about this whole time, so.
Good. Those are my conditions.
Second.
You're doing my job for me, huh? All right. All in favor, Paul? Mark?
I'm in favor.
Aaron?
Favor.
Manny?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. The item passes. Thank you very much. And thank you for the new vocabulary words, infectious invalidity. Might make a good boat name, I don't know.
Hey, I'd like to thank all of you for your time tonight. Appreciate it very much on a, on a very hot night. And special thanks to Anna and Jenna for their guidance in submitting the application. Really appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Now, is Jake going to be rejoining us?
I'm here.
Oh, there you are.
Do you want me to read through the end here? So this correspondence, we did receive things from Cape Cod Commission. Hearing notice for Barlow's Landing Monopole was today, Wednesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, five P M. Cape Cod Commission continued hearing. For the next group, Solar Born, is tomorrow at three P M. Department of Environmental Protection Waterways Regulation Program Simplified License Application for two twenty-six Holly Point Road. Cape Cod Commission Regional Policy Plan Subcommittee Meeting Wednesday, June eighteenth at nine A M. And the Cape Cod Commission Hearing Notice for the Fallon Road Market is July first at five P M. Upcoming, not any other matters, I don't think there's anything else. The sort of group working on the pool thing, do you have any updates there moving that along? Are we stuck with town attorneys?
Haven't, haven't heard a word since.
Okay, well, Kate Conley's no longer in, working for the town. So I don't know if she was sitting on her desk and it disappeared there, or whatever. But we'll follow up on that. Offcoming hearings, July ninth, twenty twenty-five, in person. We're going to try to have further discussion about the Hanover Project at that meeting. And then July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five is remote. August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five is in person. Anything else we need to know, Anna?
I can't think of anything else.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote on adjournment, her vote seat.
Favor.
Pernard.
In favor.
Our Hampton.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Eric Hurwitz.
In favor.
Any else? I'm also in favor, so we are adjourned.